Make no mistake. She still has a glittering voice. Possibly it won't shine as bright for a minute. Certainly, it glittered as clear and big as it could for her mother while fear worked a crooked mess last Wednesday night. Her voice a devotional from the car's backseat. It's okay mommy, I'm right here with you. She is made of diamonds. A poem by Vanessa Fuentes from Philando Diamond, Indiana. This is what we, as city council members, can do today to help create a culture of police accountability. And that's why I will be voting against our legal opinion to not forward this as a ballot question.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. On Wednesday, when we had this item before us, I abstained from the vote because I didn't have a chance with National Night Out beforehand to read the critique from the committee on our city attorney's opinion. And I wanted to be able to do that justice, to take the time and the space I needed to carefully review and go back and forth on this issue. I understand that my vote today is not going to change the outcome one way or the other, but I did want to take a moment to explain this for myself and for all those here and for the committee. So, for me, this issue is not clear-cut like minimum wage. When I looked at that, we clearly had requirement in the state statute 410 for the framing of the charter specifically around the actual structure and organization and administration of the city government. And the minimum wage piece to me is a business regulation. It's something that is covered under our general welfare powers and is something that could be enacted by ordinance, but is not a proper fit for the city charter. And so I would agree with Ms. Siegel's legal opinion on that, that that's really an ordinance in disguise as a charter amendment. On this, however, at first blush, my take was it's around administration of the city specific to employees. So I went back and forth on this a number of times, especially after getting a chance to read Susan Siegel's opinion and the response as well. And I just want to be very clear, I have my concerns with the idea itself. I see technical issues with implementation. I'm concerned about unintended consequences with it. I'm concerned about the actual practicality of if it's going to have any effect, should it get on the ballot, should it get passed? But that's not the question before us today. It's really about the legal questions. So I just wanted to speak to three pieces where I had the most trouble and how I got to where I am today on it. The first was really around the conflict with the indemnification statute. And I would agree with Ms. Siegel on the fact that the language that was submitted to us is, especially at first blush, overly broad. And I think that it's easy to view it as requiring more comprehensive insurance. But upon closer look, and again, the question isn't whether or not I think the language is perfect. On closer look, I felt that this was actually not in conflict with our state statutes and that there is room in there for it to cover incidents where the officers act in willful negligence or are working outside the scope of their duty. The second was with the negotiations in PRLA, and specifically about unilateral negotiations. And I feel that after looking at both opinions on this, I would take the broader view of the law and that the law is really there to prohibit cities and municipalities from union busting or prohibiting union activity and negotiations and that in good faith we could negotiate with the police union on specific terms with this. The last was really on claims history. That was probably my biggest hang-up. This thought that we oftentimes have a lot of people go fishing for money with settlements. And I've seen it, we've all been there, all councilmembers have been in these settlement cases. And we absolutely feel that the officer did nothing wrong. And it was just a case of somebody's out there looking for this money. You know what? To be good source of taxpayer dollars is just easier to give a person a few thousand dollars than to spend fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars in resources fighting this out, taking the officers off the street, having them go through court and all that. And this is pretty common, my understanding is, with a lot of settlements. It's a nuisance payment. And so my concern was around the officers, because of their claim history on insurance, ultimately having to pay higher premiums as a result of settlements and if that would conflict with our specific requirements. And I was reminded that our officers actually have to say whether or not they agree with a settlement. And so an officer has the opportunity to say, "I don't agree with this," and to go through with the trial, which in that case would then allow them to prevent their claims from going up due to any sort of case where somebody is ultimately fishing for money. So, this wasn't clear-cut. It may very well, when you legally challenge it to the committee, it may very well lose in court. But I don't know. I don't know that. And my job isn't to decide that, that's ultimately for the courts to decide. So, when quoting from our city attorney's opinion, the city council has a ministerial duty to place the measure on the ballot unless the proposed amendment is in conflict with any statutory or constitutional provisions. And I just simply could not find a clear-cut case of that. And so, the sole question is whether this proposal satisfies this legal standard. And the council must craft a ballot and transmit the proposal to the county auditor, therefore. So, because I couldn't find any clear conflict with state statute and because I think this is ultimately going to be decided by the courts, therefore, I congratulate the committee on getting the petition signatures required. And I will be voting no today because I believe that this matter should be put on the ballot.[431.12][431.12](APPLAUSE).
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually wanted to speak on all three of them, and I was thinking we might take them one at a time, but I'll try to follow the lead of my colleagues maybe and speak about the entire committee's recommendations and maybe I'll go in order. And I did speak a committee of the whole on the first item, which has to do with the minimum wage ballot initiative. And will certainly stay with my position then, which was, this is something that it's actually our obligation and duty as councilmembers to put on the ballot. I looked at 410 and I looked at what we should base our decision on, and it was pretty clear there were three things. And one of them was, was this a properly-formatted petition? Yes. Did this have the sufficient number of registered voters validated who signed it? Yes. The second thing that I thought was incredibly important was, does this comply with 410? And is it something that we can put in the charter? And clearly, I believe that it is. I think that might be where there is some difference of opinion. I will admit that it might seem more properly and a better fit as an ordinance. I might prefer it as an ordinance because then it will only take seven votes to amend it or not to. But nobody was proposing it as an ordinance. And it's also perfectly fine to be in the charter. It's a little bit like when we discuss whether tomatoes are fruits or vegetables. Well, we'll have scientists who are really clear on what they're and what they aren't. And perhaps it's even more ambiguous than the tomato issue because there are seeds in tomatoes, and I guess it's a done deal. But there aren't seeds in this. It's not clear whether it has to be a charter or not, or has to be an ordinance. In fact, if you look at the history of our charter, before we had a zoning code, lots of things were put into our charter that were very much minutia, which were very different. We had things about loaf bread, about horses, about swimming in the beaches, a lot of those issues. And when we decided it was maybe time to take some of those out and decide they're better off as an ordinance, it wasn't a court telling us they were illegal to be in there. We didn't go to a judge and talk to them about it. We didn't even vote on it up here. We went to the voters and said, "People, would you, voters, could you help determine if this is better as an ordinance or a charter?" And those things were removed, most of them were removed. We actually had to go back later and fuss about the sales of food and liquor in bars and restaurants and whether that should be in the charter or not as well. Clearly, giving the city council authority to set a minimum wage is a scheme and framework of government. And that's what 410 says the charter discussions are about. So the last thing has to do with the preemption. And I don't think there's a preemption in the Constitution, federal constitution, state constitution, or in state statutes that says cities can't set a minimum wage or we can't affect. The federal government sets one, the state sets one. Clearly, there's no preemption. That doesn't even seem to be a point of contention here. It seems, I'll be around this issue of, does it properly belong in the charter or in an ordinance? It can go in both. And so that's not our job. Just imagine if suddenly, we're going to base all charter amendments on whether the council who's there at the time is more comfortable with them being in the charter or in an ordinance. That's going to mean that the whole petitioning process is meaningless and it's moot. And why bother to do that? Because if you need to get the seven votes, whether it's more appropriate as an ordinance or a charter, well, then they're going to stop, we, as long as I'm here, are going to stop any charter amendment that comes forward because we can say we believe it's more appropriate as an ordinance. So I think it's my obligation and duty simply to approve ballot language and let this move forward to the next level. And if the voters decide that it should be an ordinance, well, vote it down, keep it out of the charter then. That's why we have elections and that's what the charter is for and that's what the charter amendment process is for. So, I have to check speaker management here because my sense is if I'm actually talking on the three issues, that would be 21 minutes. But I'll try to keep it down a little bit since I know that we're trying to wrap it all into one comment. Because I also wanted some time to talk about the police insurance and I also wanted some time to at least mention the third item on the agenda, too. So, very briefly, I'll try to hit this seven-minute mark, but that's only two minutes and 23 seconds from now. With the police insurance issue, I think there maybe are some fears that somehow that we can't do this without somehow violating state statutes. I don't think that was ever the intention of the initiators and the proposals of this ordinance. And when I looked at all the concerns and when I looked at the statutes and I looked at the proposal, I saw there's easy pathways to make sure however it's implemented, it complies with all the state rules and regulations that are in there. That was always the intention and it can be easily done. So I, based on that, it's hard for me to say that there's any clarity that this is violating or has to and is demanding that we violate state law. And of course, we don't want to violate state law. And I don't believe that the petitioners want us to violate state law either. I think that we all recognize it's our duty to indemnify the employees of the city, and we should, when they're working appropriately, following the policies and guidance of the city, and we want to do that. And that we can find a way, if this were to go on the ballot and if it passes, we can find a way to do that, that doesn't violate any of the state statutes. So I believe there, it's also my duty, on the criteria I've identified for myself, to allow this to move forward on the ballot and approve the ballot language.[804.13][804.13](APPLAUSE). Just 58 seconds, because I do, the third item I'm very excited about, which is setting these new goals for our workforce, and I know that isn't a big deal, necessarily as big a deal for our discussion right here. And it could end up not being a very big deal, but if we're actually able to do that, it could be. We've had a lot of trouble diversifying our workforce across the board. We've had a lot of trouble setting goals for ourselves and saying we want to do it. This is the first time since I've been on the council, and I think we've talked about this now for about 10 years, where we're going to set goals and we're going to say we want to get to a point where the people who work for city government in the city of Minneapolis reflect, demographically speaking, the, close anyway, the racial and gender makeup of the city of Minneapolis.[857.19][857.19](APPLAUSE). We're approving the goals and also, I think, we're making a commitment and there's a plan in place to help us get there. So I really appreciate that coming forward. And my time's up, I did it in seven minutes.
Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
No on number two, aye on number one and three.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
So it's a little more complicated, I think, for me. So I just wanted to be clear. And let me, no clerk, if you don't understand this. But on number one, I'm voting no on the passage of a resolution concurring with the legal findings. I would like to vote yes on the ballot language and yes on the staff direction directing the city coordinated to work with the stakeholders. Is that clear? Or do I have to vote no on the whole thing? It seemed like there were three separate votes on number one. If I'm wrong, can I get some clarity on what we're voting on?
You're voting no on 1.1, you're voting yes on 1.2.
Okay, I'm on target. And I'm voting yes on 1.3. Then I'd like to vote no on 2.1. And I would like to vote yes on 2.2, which I'm assuming is where we placed the ballot And then I would like to vote yes on number three, both 3.1.
Kano.
Mr. Clerk, I am voting no on items 1.1 and 1.3. I am voting yes for item 1.2, to approve the ballot language for $15 hour minimum wage. On item number two, I only see one item, and I am voting no on that item.
There's a second item on the ballot language.
Okay, I'm online on the city's.
It's in your pocket.
Right.
Councilmember Glidden would like to clarify why the ballot language is not on the agenda. Councilmember Glidden.
So, when I introduced the second item, I added the ballot language because we did not move that during the committee, so that's why it was not on the agenda.
Okay, so the ballot language would be item 2.2 on this?
Correct.
My understanding. Alrighty, so 2.1 is a no, and 2.2 is a yes.
And number three?
Yes, on number three.
Reich.
Aye.
Aye.
I have 13 ayes on Cal's report number three, having to do with the strategic workforce planning on item number one, having to do with the petition for minimum wage. I have 11 ayes. I have, on item 1.1, I have nos from councilmembers Gordon and Kano. I have on 1.2 unanimous support for approval of the ballot language. And I have on item 1.3, one no from councilmember Kano on item 1.3. On item two, which has to do with the petition for police insurance requirements as a charter amendment, I have 11 ayes. I have one nay. And I have councilmember Gordon and councilmember Kano voting no.
Please let the clerk do the call. Roll call.
I have.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Johnson voting no. I have councilmembers Gordon and Kano voting no on 2.1. And I have council, I have all councilmembers voting yes on 2.2, except councilmember Andrew Johnson.
And Mr. Clerk, councilmember Andrew Johnson would like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Clerk. I would just like my vote on 2.2 amended to be aye, but on 2.1, I'll stay with nay.
Madam President, there are 13 ayes then on item 2.2, the ballot language for the charter petition on police professional liability insurance.
Any further? Seeing the vote, those items pass. Next, we have Community Development Regulatory Services report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 15 items for approval today. Item number one is the Women's Club.
See you in court. 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 See you in court.
undermined the people in the act. Undermine the whole vote. Undermine our people. That's undemocratic, that's what that is.
Item number one is the modification of the interest rate for the bond issuance at the Women's Club. Item number two is allowing us to have electronic service notice violations. Items three, four, five, and six are all PACE energy financing projects. Item seven are the regular liquor business and gambling licenses. Item eight is a contract amendment with the homeownership center. Item nine is a contract with the Community Reinvestment Fund on loan servicing. Item 10 is a forgivable loan for the Worth Co-op. Item 11 is the State of Minnesota Contract on Employment and Training. 12 are our Brownfields cleanup award grants. Item 13 is homeownership opportunities through the vacant boarded recycling program, a variety of actions related to that. Item 14 are applications to deed for the redevelopment program. And item 15 is a city loan and grant to the Hennepin Theater Trust for the acquisition and renovation of the Solera Building. With that, I'll move all items, one through 15, for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the entire Community Development Regulatory Services report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on three, four, five, and six.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
So I remember years ago, a lot of us got really excited about PACE financing and then it seemed to hit the city and nothing was ever happening. And it's just absolutely fantastic to see these coming forward today. And I commend the businesses that are doing it and the committee for their work and the staff in getting it passed.
Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing one item forward for approval. This is the new and improved community participation guidelines. We're also, as part of this one item, adopting the three-year funding allocations for the neighborhoods. This is totaling $12.32 million. And if you're curious about the allocation to your neighborhood, that's available. I won't read through what each neighborhood's getting. And also authorizing execution of the contracts consistent with the new guidelines and the approved amounts.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of, on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to defer to the vice chair for this because I did not chair the meeting.
Councilmember Gordon.
Okay. We, the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee is just bringing forward four items for approval. First is a grant acceptance from FEMA for fire ground survival training. Second is passage of a resolution accepting a donation from the Police Executive Research Forum for $1,000 for travel expenses for the chief to present at a management institute at Boston University. The third item is authorizing a contract with VersaTerm for a commercial off-the-shelf law enforcement records management system. It's a significant amount, but it goes for duration of 12.5 years and is replacing an out-of-date system. The amount is $9.8 million over the 12 and a half years. And the fourth item's authorizing a contract with SMG for police department to provide law enforcement services in the neighborhoods adjacent to US Bank Stadium. It's authorizing an amendment to that contract to altering the start date of the agreement to July 22, 2016. And I will move all four items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration. All items are the regularly seasonal activities of the department and projects of the department. With the exception of two and three, two is authorizing the sale of excess granite pavers from Nikka Mall. And item three is authorizing the renegotiation and execution of the master loan agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services deferral program by increasing the aggregate or gross SAC units from 10 to 25 and decrease the participation in the program and extending the deferment period from five to 10 years. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that committee is chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today for consideration. All items are the regularly seasonal activities of the department and projects of the department. With the exception of two and three, two is authorizing the sale of excess granite pavers from Nikka Mall. And item three is authorizing the renegotiation and execution of the master loan agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services deferral program by increasing the aggregate or gross SAC units from 10 to 25 and decrease the participation in the program and extending the deferment period from five to 10 years. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice Chair Andrew Johnson will give the report.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report.
pavers from Niklet Mall, and item three is authorizing the renegotiation and execution of the master loan agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services deferral program by increasing the aggregate or gross SAC units from 10 to 25, and decrease the participation in the program and extending the deferment period from five to 10 years. With that, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Barbara Johnson.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice Chair Andrew Johnson will give the report.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report. Any discussion on any of those items? I'm sorry. Sorry.
Council, council vice, sorry, the vice chair of the committee will give the report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Andrew Johnson, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chair Bender. We have seven items we are bringing forward today. The first is an interim use permit. Items two, three, and four are vacation variance and rezoning related to the Lander Group project. Items five and six are rezonings and a vacation related to the Project Pride and Living item. And then, item seven is rezoning related to CPM development. And I'll stand for any questions.
So, you've moved all items.
And I'll move all items, yes.
Councilmember Johnson has moved all items on the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.[1453.01]